Until the end of the meeting or 11:00, whenever it comes first?
I'll try my darndest for even longer than the meeting. What do we got here?
Do those cars still in Congress?
What's that?
Do those cars still in yet or no more?
Car. Oh, I haven't heard.
I know they paid for them, they have the checks.
Yeah.
I didn't know, I didn't hear if they're moving or not. Heard they were closing.
Morning, Jamie.
Okay, yeah, and I.
Can I keep this little stuff here?
Okay. Then you're gonna lick every bill? Then you're gonna lick every bill?
Ask Terry when he comes in.
Like everything possible to talk to him.
After he's coming in for that. Terry's gonna, he wants to be added to the agenda for the 1307 funds from Sharon. It's not on there yet, but. It's about shared people funds to keep people.
Steven, can we get you to sign in?
Sure, yeah.
Remember, was this the meeting I was gonna make or the next one?
I kinda get the first one in December, the only is this one. I can't. But I've got it open for December.
That's what I'm asking. Well, that's not good enough.
Do we get blue grant money?
Yes.
Okay. Try to scan this real fast.
I didn't do that.
He's probably happy about what we got.
We're just.
Just scanning, I didn't even know about this, I'm just reading it real fast. Says here, more than ten, less than ten, watch me see.
Okay.
For officers. For officer.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. I was just asking Jamie, I said, was it this meeting?
Next meeting.
I feel like it's the person in December. I said, me too, I was like, what?
We are keeping.
General fund or shares?
It was a general fund. Other miscellaneous.
You traded with Rick. He came in at like eight thirty three.
No, it was really, it's like thirty nine, it feels better.
It is in the general fund miscellaneous.
That's where it happens. Yeah. And that would be standard, not corrected, but informed, that's right, it would have to there. Yep. And then we can. Politically correct on what you appropriate or.
I don't know if it's politically correct or just the appropriate term.
The appropriate term there.
All right, it's nine o'clock, I'll call this meeting at the Mercer County Commission order. For the agenda, we'd like to add House Bill 1307 funds. And then the October recording fees. October recording fees. Recorders. Yeah, and that amount is $3,519.80. Any other additions to the agenda?
I'd like to add HR and EM, please, two separate ones.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Motion by Rick, seconded by Jamie to accept the amended agenda, any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, motion passes. We have the minutes from November one.
I'll make a motion to accept them, that's what I read through. If anybody can read and make a second.
Okay, motion by Rick to accept the November one minutes, is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion, corrections or additions? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, motion passes. Next up is review and approval of bills.
Do we have? Very clear of these.
Right there.
There it is. Went through it three times.
It's a little under a four hour drive, so what would that be, like 280?
At first I'm like, wait a minute, shouldn't that be more? But then I see that he's got his second. Okay. I was concerned he shorted himself. I was thinking it should be the round trip mileage, but it was.
Re-choy.
Yeah.
No Daniel this morning. No Dan this morning.
Oh, yeah. Maybe he's the come rolling in.
So it should be our last bill for the social service bill, right?
It looks like it ended on October 17th, the date of the.
Right, it's the third one. Cards.
It ended on the 17th.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
I, that's what I was.
We were looking to.
Ended for quite a while. Yes. Okay, so he left it with one, right?
I need to go sign it before I leave today, so.
Okay.
If I leave, just remind me. I'll be in trouble.
Does this answer or something? I didn't see it. I didn't see this number, man. Just sign it. I think we gotta leave it at this end, because I feel like just. Didn't you do that? Oh, okay. Yeah, it was, that's a good. Right.
Wasn't that soon.
That was something.
Okay. These two providers are okay, and I have to do a sign.
Fifteen?
Yes. Fifteen.
Careful what you sign.
And then here, he always has this dated and age. Twenty-three. Nope, this is for 23. All right, yeah, I think that, thank you.
Thank you.
So what did you write into there, Jean?
What, what did, did you do with it, Joe? See now, this is what we were talking about last time.
Yeah. I know, I was looking at that.
Thought it was safe.
Yeah.
It's kind of fake. There's.
Raise it by six, yes. Just a second. She's out here. The cow's around the highway.
Bobby?
What's up here? This is the, yeah. Might be, actually, this is where we go.
I think it's supposed to be 30 first.
Okay. Please tell me that's the.
No, not that. I think it's, it's like the one I believe. Both three minutes. A little bit of a week after that. Does what it's up to. It's, it's all the. They're right. I know, I wrote, I had to write down the dates real quick, because I was like, oh yeah, I didn't do that either.
You did it last month.
I was gonna do the same, but I.
And my name's after turning.
I think I have September.
I have September and October here.
Good, Gunny, do you know you guys copy?
I got my dentist just right here.
I just have to tie in some dates, okay? Yeah, one from Bill and one from the.
Five classes.
Oh, there it comes. Well, do they make the under the same account?
Different stores though.
Different stores. They're still separate stores.
Yep. Okay, never mind.
I know.
We fixed the mailbox last night.
Another one?
I think that we fixed that last.
Probably fixed one.
That's what I'm saying.
Lot of mailboxes.
Those salt and mailboxes should be like kilometers?
Yeah.
Are we gonna sometime have a discussion on the outcome of our horses?
Hopefully after Thanksgiving.
Okay. I know it's not on the agenda, so I'm just asking.
Hopefully after Thanksgiving is what should be resolved, right? Hopefully.
Did they get a, I mean, she was. Did they get a chart, I mean, nothing came out of that.
No, it'll go back to court again after the, after Thanksgiving is what it was.
Because they have court the day before Thanksgiving. Is this separate, though?
I don't know why the church picked, I thought he said after Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay.
Maybe your insurance department could be knownies, huh?
I did tell them that Dunn County just did that, so I had, you know. They have a mountain police force here. There you are.
You can bring that coke, too.
Yep.
Yeah.
Bring that up with the.
None of them felt like it was an idea.
Well, I think it's cheaper for gas than to feed them.
Paul said he doesn't do horses, because he had some issues with cows around Thanksgiving or around Halloween. And he said, "That bull," which he stared in the eyes.
They do have that look sometimes.
You remember about the horses?
You tell me if he was on a horse, it would have been different.
He was just tired of dealing with cows.
He didn't want to have further to fall when he got hit.
A horse could have maneuvered him around, I don't know. Next thing on even is a cow. Not canine, but cattle.
Are they gonna say he double as a canine?
Maybe. Um, my black wife thinks that he's a cattle dog, he's a six. No, not so much.
Carmen, is this Minute Book, is that like our new big?
Yes.
The big binded ones in there?
Yes. And the thing is, it, it does last a couple of years, but it's official for our minutes.
It's that big, the big.
Yep. They're not cheap.
No. But they're.
And they're very difficult to find, that match, because we have it bought for, I bet you, 15 years. Because we bought five at a time.
Right, yeah.
Three, four years and each one of them.
Yeah, no, they're, I mean, they're solid books, so.
Okay, is there a motion to approve bills?
Make our motion.
Motion by Rick, is there a second? Second by Jamie? Any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye on motion passes. Next up, planning and zoning, Cindy?
Uh, it's really not planning and zoning, but this was a, a abatement from Heidi, the city assessor in Beulah. And she couldn't make it today, but essentially the, the land, the property owners asked for a re- a review and she conducted it and lowered the, the true and full value. Took off twenty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and the city did approve that October sixteenth. So I, I'm sorry, I don't know, I, I didn't know until last night that she couldn't be here, so I don't know what. But clearly something was too high on the assessment, so she lowered it.
Instead the city approved it October sixteenth?
Yep.
Right?
So then we approve it and then it goes, I'm assuming it goes to the state and it gets corrected and?
Oh, no, this is for this year.
Oh, this is for this year, okay.
So we'll hurry up and get it. Oh, no, it'll just be an abatement, it doesn't go to the state, we just fix it.
We just fix it, okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve the abatement request? I'll move to approve the abatement request, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Rick? Any discussion? Any discussion?
What, where, where is this property, what, what is it?
It's on the top, it shows there, um, lots fifteen and sixteen, block two, Barton Estates. I don't know how to say that last name.
And that, that's fine, but what are, what are we looking at here, empty lots or?
No, it's a house.
It's a house.
It was valued at three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, so it has to be, there's improvements on there.
My question then is, you valued it at three seventy-nine or they val- the city valued it?
The city.
The city does.
I have nothing to do with this, I'm just presenting it cause she couldn't make it.
You just. And what's your opinion on it, Cindy?
I haven't seen it. But I'm, I'm guessing she, I mean, she knows what she's doing, she's certified. She wouldn't have granted them the, the reduction if it wasn't warranted.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll vote aye, Rick?
I'm gonna vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
That motion passes?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Cindy.
Thanks Cindy.
Um, next up we got, um, is it Eric? Hey Eric.
Morning.
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 I'm just gonna, I got like three slides I wanna show you guys, so.
Yep. We, we guarantee nothing on the IT. Do you have to switch anything over there?
I don't know.
And say, say the input button. If there's such a thing on there.
Is that the TV remote, Carmen? What's that?
That's, that's a TV?
Yeah, this is the one that turned it on earlier. Okay, so. Delta this. There's an input, yeah. Jean's gone, so. There's another one on the other side, I don't know if that will work, but I'm assuming it's.
I think we're probably out of power now.
Unfortunately, no. Right.
Take one else, HDI, plug it in.
I, I can just start without checking some slides out there maybe.
IT runs under Murphy's law, so.
It's always in the meetings where I fast. So Eric Wodeski, IBP Energy Partners, uh, I think we've gotten to know each other a little bit over the past year and, um, uh, I'm here today to talk about the moratorium that was reinstated on solar, uh, potential solar energy systems here in Mercer County. Um, so I just wanted to make a few comments, a brief discussion, and should you guys have any questions or need anything from, from our, our side of the thing, you know, we'd be happy to, to provide some context and so, um, my purpose today, you know, really is to show up and to put it plainly, you know, request that the, the moratorium on the solar energy system ordinance is lifted and the ordinance is reinstated as it was written and approved uh, back in July. And then, you know, offer a few thoughts on the solar ordinance as it is and, and provide a few, um, just thoughts on the project, so. You know, I, in watching the videos and seeing how you guys were talking about it, you know, definitely seemed like there's like a bit of confusion over the, the adoption process and, um, if I'm telling you guys things that you already know, I apologize for, for staying, getting out of my lane, but I, I, you know, one of the slide, the main slide I wanted to show was just like a, a timeline of the adoption process and so I'll just summarize it real quick. But back in September of twenty-two, uh, was the first time that we made a presentation on, on the project we'd like to do in Mercer County, a hundred fifty megawatt solar farm project. Um, that was in September, we came to the Board of Commissioners here, uh, the moratorium was in effect at that time. I started at IBP in January of twenty-one and sometime early in, in the first half of twenty-one, I remember meeting with some of the planning and zoning commissioners and the moratorium was in effect at that point as well. Um, so it's, obviously there's been a lo- a lengthy moratorium on this ordinance for, for some time now. So in January of twenty-three, uh, we came to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the first time to formally discuss this proj- uh, process. Uh, we presented some analysis of the draft mainly showing that how the, the ordinance at that point in time basically zoned out or effectively zoned out solar, um, from Mercer County with potential. In February of twenty, in February of twenty-three, uh, we were at the meeting again and there was additional deliberation at the, the Planning and Zoning Commission about the ordinance, uh, the same again in March of twenty-three deliberation continued. Um, in April of twenty-three, the Planning and Zoning Commission held the, their public hearing on the solar ordinance, which there was a few people who showed up. Um, but generally, if I recall, there was not, not too much opposition, um, to the ordinance as it had been revised from, from where it started, um, when they, when they picked up the, the conversation back in January. Um, in May of twenty-twenty-three, uh, the planning and zoning voted to advance ordinance to the Board of Commissioners. Um, and then in June, um, the, the Board of Commissioners, if you recall, uh, you advertised, um, that there would be a public hearing on this, which again, uh, you know, I, I think Representative Novak, us and maybe a couple of other people showed up at that meeting and, and, and offered some, uh, different viewpoints on the ordinance, um, which, you know, then I think on, it was, uh, June twenty-first of, of this year, there was the vote, uh, to adopt the ordinance and open the, the public comment or, you know, as our interpretation of the, the code says, a, a thirty-day grievance window, um, for the submission of written grievances, um, which as, as far as I understood, none were submitted. Um, of course, we were not gonna submit agreements as, um, why would we? Um, and then, uh, in, in July of twenty-three, the thirty-day window for grievances elapsed with no submissions and, um, of course, I'm no lawyer, but we've been working with our counsel quite a bit, uh, to understand, you know, how these work across, uh, North Dakota, but you know, specifically here in Mercer County as well, and at that time the solar ordinance became law, um, as there was no, no opposition. And, and it's definitely, you know, was, I remember the meeting, it was definitely a bit confusing in June, uh, when that vote happened and, and how that would play out, but, um, you know, as far as we understood, you guys did do it according to, uh, the, the policies that are, um, both from the state and, uh, in your zoning ordinance. And then, um, in October, uh, the, the reinstatement of the, the moratorium for six months, um, they'd come back, which, you know, of course is why I'm here today. Um, is, you know, we do, um, want to invest in Mercer County, bring tax dollars into Mercer County, jobs into Mercer County. Um, but, you know, for that to be possible, you know, there has to be an ordinance that is certainly rigorous, you know, as, as most counties want, but, um, fair and, and, and reasonable, to put it plainly, and so I guess, you know, I just wanna offer a few thoughts on the solar ordinance as it is. Um, and, uh, just food for thought. So, um, you know, as it was adopted in July of twenty-three, you guys still have what I would argue is the most rigorous zoning ordinance for solar farms in the United States. Not in the United States, but in, in, in the counties in which we are active at least, you know, I've read hundreds of ordinances over my time doing solar and, and you guys got an ordinance that is robust, um, specifically, you know, the setbacks that you've imposed, you know, to. and, and you guys got an ordinance that is robust, um, specifically, you know, the setbacks that you've imposed, you know, to, protect non-participating landowners, homeowners, um, who live in proximity to a potential project. They're quite large, you know, they're, they're, they're more than we've seen in other places in the United States. And, you know, you, in the ordinance as it's written, you know, there's an avenue for us to go to those non-participating landowners, and, and see if they would sign a waiver or would wanna be part of the project. But, um, you know, as it is written right now and as it was adopted, um, you know, we're probably gonna need about twice as much land for our solar project that, uh, we typically would under, you know, a normal, uh, set of setbacks. You know, setbacks are really, you know, what are gonna dictate, you know, the amount of land that project's gonna require, you know. Technically speaking, we need about six acres per one megawatt AC, uh, especially up here in the north. Um, and, uh, that means a quite a bit of land, you know, for a project, you know, we, we might need, you know, nine hundred acres, but now, you know, we're probably gonna need, landowners to, uh, um, probably, you know, fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred acres, um, to accommodate the setbacks, but, you know, still build the project at the size that, um, that we would want to build it at. And so, um, in saying that, you know, there is, you know, quite a bit of overlap and, and we've paid, uh, for our attorneys to, to really study and I, I, I shared with, uh, I just got it last night, so I sent it to Cindy, but you know, perhaps she could send around, you know, the analysis that our attorneys have provided on, on North Dakota Public Service Commission, uh, regulations of, you know, wind, solar projects, you know, they obviously regulate, uh, traditional generation as well. Um, and then what Mercer County's ordinance currently says, um, you know, there's quite a bit of overlap there where, you know, I would, I would say there are, some redundancies between the, the two, um, you know, and, and, you know, a, a couple, just for example, um, that, that we see that Mercer County is, is kind of, you know, taken beyond, or not beyond, but just, I, I guess, enhanced regulation, um, that, you know, typically would just be done or overseen by the North Dakota Public Service Commission, would be on your environmental studies. So you guys, you know, in there are requiring some robust, uh, really a full scope of environmental studies, whether it's your cultural surveys, um, your, your wetland studies, your habitat studies, your, um, cultural resource studies. Um, you know, you guys are requiring all that. That was already gonna be required, uh, as part of a North Dakota Public Service Commission application, but, um, so you guys, you have that. You've adopted, uh, some avoidance zones, so, you know, if it is determined, um, by the Board of Commissioners, as it's written, that there, you know, could potentially be, uh, a lignite mine, mine of lignite underneath the, where we wanna do the project. You know, there is the ability for, um, the Board of Commissioners to establish an avoidance zone. Um, you know, again, that is, a power that is already possessed by North Dakota Public Service Commission as they evaluate these projects. And so, um, you know, a bit of redundancy there. Um, you know, the, you know, another one that North Dakota Public Service Commission does not regulate or require, but your ordinance does, um, have language for is on power purchase agreements. Um, I believe as it's written in the ordinance now, that, uh, it's required that we show that we have a power purchase agreement for the energy we generate within twelve months of issuance of a conditional use permit. And so, you know, that's something that North Dakota Public Service Commission has said, you know, we actually cannot regulate that. Uh, we don't wanna regulate that. That's, um, more so between the energy producer and the regional transmission operator, which, you know, in this case, it's gonna be Southwest Power Pool, uh, for our project. Um, but you guys have language in there that, um, you know, we didn't object to. We knew that, North Dakota Public Service Commission's already said, we don't want to, you know, we, we don't have the ability to regulate the project based on this and, um, you know, I, I think, uh, you know, some lawyers in the state would argue that Mercer County does not either, but, you know, that's not something we objected to. We agreed, we said, hey, look, you know, we understand that you guys want, to see, you know, a viable plan for this power to be sold. Um, and so, and, you know, we're confident that we're gonna have a power purchase agreement for this project, um, at that point or within the twelve months of, of, of obtaining a conditional use permit, um, from Mercer County. And so, um, that's, that's, you know, and the last point I would, I would discuss is decommissioning. So you guys have adopted some rigorous decommissioning standards. They're very similar to what North Dakota Public Service Commission has. North Dakota Public Service Commission already mandates and regulates these projects for decommissioning. They understand that, you know, what has happened in the past, not just in North Dakota, but, you know, I spent a lot of time in Louisiana where oil and gas is big there and, and, and out in western North Dakota where we have another project where oil and gas is large. You know, there's, we've seen those legacy projects where there were, there weren't decommissioning regulations, there weren't reclamation bonds, there wasn't money put down, um, back then. And so I think North Dakota Public Service Commission, North Dakota Legislature has already, you know, given North Dakota Public Service Commission the power to mandate that we have to, have a plan, an independent engineer, we have to have a restoration strategy, and we have to have, uh, acceptable, um, securities put down to finance, um, the removal of the systems going forward. And, you know, I, just like you guys, you know, I wanna live in a community that's not gonna be, scarred with, you know, infrastructure that, you know, once it's done working, is just defunct and, and blighted and, and sitting there. And so, you know, you guys have a lot of coverage both from what your ordinance has said, um, but then, you know, of course, that layer that's already, was in place at the North Dakota Public Service Commission. So, uh, that's, you know, a little bit of discussion between, what you guys have and what N D P S C is, is doing and already, um, managing. However, um, you know, the last point I really wanna make on it is, you know, that we, of course, have a, a little bit of concern, um, that, you know, during this moratorium process, you know, maybe, you know, and I don't mean to presume, um, but, um, you know, there might be some problematic regulations, introduced into the, into the zoning process that, um, you know, uh, of course, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not your guy's lawyer, but, um, you know, we've studied this and, and, you know, we're trying to understand, you know, what is the county able to regulate, what does the P S C regulate, and what has the North Dakota Legislature, given counties and P S C the ability to, to regulate? And, um, you know, we wanna do a project here. And so, um, you know, there's certain regulations that, that could be imposed that, that would probably make it too expensive or prohibitive for us to do it. And, um, you know, those would be if, if, you know, studies to determine potential lignite deposits beneath the surface or rare earth minerals, you know, if that did come into play and that was mandated. Those are really expensive studies that, you know, are not typical across the United States. And, you know, the landowners who have signed up for us, you know, they want to do these projects, and we want to do the projects on the land where we have landowners who wanna do it. But, you know, if, if there's requirements of, of expensive, arduous, you know, I would even say maybe random surveys, um, to, to increase the difficulty to do a project, uh, in this area that's, you know, not imposed on other, um, types of generators or, or land uses, um, you know, we would argue that, you know, that's, uh, unnecessary. And, you know, some of that, you know, specifically on the rare earth minerals, you know, that was before the North Dakota Public, or the North Dakota Legislature in this past session, and they, you know, opted to not adopt that legislation. So, um, for it to be taken up at the county level, uh, you know, we would argue, you know, doesn't make a lot of sense and, and it would hurt, you know, the potential of a project, uh, here in Mercer County. Um, then, uh, you know, another one, you know, that we, of course, don't want to happen is, is for the North Dakota, uh, or for Mercer County to adopt, a type of regulation that would might want us to, uh, provide grid reliability information. Um, in, in trying to determine how, you know, our project is gonna impact the grid, you know, uh, you know, we would argue that, you know, Mercer County is not, uh, a grid regulator, um, it's probably, you know, not within, uh, the ability of Mercer County as granted by the North Dakota Legislature. And so, um, you know, we would hope that, you know, a regulation along those lines is not adopted, because we're already spending, literally millions of dollars to study this with Southwest Power Pool to understand how does a hundred and fifty megawatt solar farm impact the grid, you know? And so we, um, have been going through a multi-year process. We've been going through this process with SVP for literally since, uh, I think, twenty nineteen. And so, you know, we're right there. We expect, um, in Q four of, hopefully Q three of twenty twenty-four, we'll have signed a generator interconnect agreement, to plug the project in at the new Leland Old substation, um, you know, and if it was too expensive for us to do that, you know, we wouldn't have proceeded this far in the process. And so, um, you know, that's kind of a relationship between us and the, the RTO, um, you know, that we're going through right now. And, you know, you, you guys aren't gonna get a project at this point or, you know, with this much, uh, advocacy before you, you know, if, if it was too expensive to plug it into the grid or if it, it just, you know, it would, you, you know, if there, there's only so much, uh, you know, space in, in, in the line for power, right? And so, at some point, there's not gonna be any more space for more projects with the existing generators that are already here and have already been established for a long time in Mercer County. And so, you know, there's opportunity for us to fit in what is relatively a small so- small utility scale solar farm, um, that, that we've been working through that process for some years now. And then, um, you know, the, um, I, 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 I think, you know, a couple of the thoughts, maybe if, if we were to share it with you guys, the analysis that we had done by our attorneys, um, on, on the ordinance on the North Dakota Public Service Commission, we'll, we'll share that with you guys if, you know, read it as, as you will and, and do with it what you want, but, there's some good information in there that just, just kinda talks about, you know, what technically, you know, the county might be able to do versus, you know, what the Public Service Commission has been asked to do. Um, and so, that was my thoughts on, on, on the ordinance as it has been, uh, presently written and then things that we are, you know, would love to not see included as, you know, it, it probably would create a, a problem, you know, for anybody who's wanna do a project here. And so, um, last slide, I wanna just give a couple of updates on the project is, you know, you guys have heard about it and, and, and know what we wanna do in general, but, um, right now, you know, we're trying to, to bring in a couple more landowners, hopefully landowners that, well, as far as the people I've talked to, landowners that live in Mercer County, um, own land here, um, so we can comply with the setbacks as they've been written. Um, we've signed, I got one last landowner that, we need to sign for the right of way for the project. So to get our pro- our energy from, you know, where it is here on thirty-one, uh, over to Leland Olds, you know, we've had to sign, I think, nine landowners, and there's one more to go. Uh, so we're, we're nearly there. And of course, we're, you know, here today to talk about and monitor developments with the zoning ordinance. And so, that's where the project is right now. Um, a couple of dates, you know, like I said earlier, we're, we're planning to sign our generator interconnect in probably Q three, Q four of twenty-four. Schedule's always a little fluid with RTIs, RTOs. Um, we, we would like to start construction in Q one of twenty twenty-six, uh, with achieving a commercial operation date in, in Q three of twenty twenty-seven. So, um, really the last thing I'd wanna leave you guys with is, um, a couple merits of the project. Um, you know, what we really want is for Basin Electric to be part of this project. And so when we started out back in, I guess it would have been twenty nineteen, when we first signed up some land here, you know, Basin had out an RFP for, uh, renewable energy projects that they could buy power from. So we got land here, we got land in McKenzie County, submitted our projects, we won, we negotiated, COVID happened, and the deal fell apart to, to do a power purchase agreement based. Um, you know, of course, some, some time has passed. We've tried to find other people who would wanna buy power here in this market. Um, and there's a variety of commercial industrial firms that, that do wanna, you know, uh, participate in that. They use a lot of oil and gas companies specifically that, um, you know, they do want the renewable energy as part of their, their portfolio. Uh, but nevertheless, uh, a couple of months ago, pretty much, and I think in July, right when the ordinance was done, I was feeling really excited about the project. You know, Basin came back to us, uh, and said, hey, look, we actually wanna re-explore having these conversations about the power purchase agreement. So since then, uh, we've signed a letter of intent to negotiate a power purchase agreement with Basin, um, you know, that's contingent upon, uh, some grant funding that's available, uh, through the Inflation Reduction Act. Um, so there's money available for, um, rural co-ops across the United States, um, to, to, to sign power purchase agreements and acquire renewable energy generation, um, to diversify their, their portfolio and their generation mix. You know, that's of course gonna still be in concert with, with, with their coal and natural gas fleet. But, um, uh, we were very excited, you know, that now we're having this conversation again with Basin and, you know, if they are awarded the grant. I'm not, I'm, you know, that's more so handed by our power markets team. So, you know, if, if you guys want, we can probably share some more information on that, a little bit more eloquently than, than I'm saying here. But, um, you know, we're really excited that Basin is, is back in the mix and back interested in our projects here in North Dakota. Um, and the last point I'd make is, you know, we do wanna do this project. We're looking at a hundred and seventy-five million dollar investment in Mercer County, um, that, according to the North Dakota Century Code, um, that, that governs the taxation of, of these projects, it would support over ten million dollars in property taxes, um, for the thirty-five-year lifespan of the project. And so, um, that's all I have to say about, about it today. Um, any questions, by chance?
Any questions from the commissioners?
I know it's a bit of a whirlwind conversation, but if it's all right, I'd love to send you guys the slides I sent, so you can just peruse it and, um,
I appreciate that.
One question I, when you were talking about the redundancy with, uh, P F C and like, if our, our, our redundant, they're the same, I guess it really shouldn't make any difference, like with you guys versus, uh.
Yeah, and so, you know, we, we, and we knew that, you know, as it was adopted, and so, you know, we didn't object to that, you know, we didn't wanna, you know, further, uh, confuse or, or chime in on the process, you know? But, you know, I, I think how, you know, it would work inevitably is, you know, once the ordinance, if the ordinance is, is reinstated, you know, we'd make our application to the county, you know, we, we know we're gonna have to go before the North Dakota Public Service Commission. So we're all, have already done all the due diligence that they're gonna require on the environmental, um, and all the other agency coordination that they're gonna require. And so we'll bring that to you guys to review, but, you know, technically, probably, like, a lot of the determination should reside with P S C on this, but, um, you know, and I think, you know, maybe with our application, we'd, say like, hey, this is a, a topic that's specifically covered by North Dakota Public Service Commission citing review of these projects. Um, but nevertheless, you know, it's your community and you guys wanna, you know, like, is there a wetland across this whole property that you're trying to put it on or not, you know? Um, and so, you know, we're, we're gonna provide that information with an application that we make.
I guess I would like more information from Basin, if you have that, um, just because of the, I feel there was miscommunication when we talked the first time about the power purchase agreements.
Yeah.
Um, and then the fact that it did fall apart with COVID. So I'd like more information on that. I did, um, talk to the associations late last night, and so there is some things that I wanna look at. I'm just not prepared to do it today. And from my understanding, P and Z got canceled for tomorrow night?
Correct.
Meeting, so it wouldn't be to a December meeting if something was to go back to them. Um, I'm very thankful for what our P and Z board did in this ordinance and the work they did. Just maybe some verbiage that needs to be.
Yeah.
Changed, and maybe it doesn't need to be, but, um, that's where I stand on that.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, like I said to start, you guys definitely got a, a robust ordinance, but, you know, of course, you guys wanna do your due diligence on it. So, so we're here, you know, if you guys want us to be in these meetings and talk, you know, we'd love to be. And of course, we're gonna watch the videos and keep abreast of the situation, but, uh, thank you for your time.
Thanks Eric. All right. Uh, next up, uh, Steve Hyde, um, concerns on County eighteen. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Um, greetings commissioners. My name is Stephen Hyde. I'm here today requesting the thirty-five mile per hour s- uh, semi-heavy speed limit signs on County eighteen to be reinstated. The road in question is east of Highway two hundred, running east towards the bridge north of Stanton on Highway thirty-seven. A leg of that county road also goes north towards County twenty-six and thirty-seven. So it's kind of three, three-part, uh, road. I originally requested the speed limit reduction from Ken in twenty twenty, after being ran off the county road by a speeding semi hauling gravel and was driving in the middle of the road. The speed limit reduction has reduced blinding dust and traffic safety concerns on that road. The road has yearly issues between Kurt Albert's and Boersold Farm, where the hard pack gets beat up and soft spots begin to emerge. When this happens, the county calls in junky scoria to try to temporarily alleviate the problem. This issue happens, happened again this last September after a three-to-four day period where three-to-five semis were witnessed every fifteen minutes. Over an eight-to-ten hour workday, this is more than a hundred semi trips per day. This is just one example, probably more, most, most severe, but has happened numerous times over the last three to four years. Thus requiring a gravel road to need maintenance every two to three weeks to deal with washboard and soft spots. In fact, just this morning, the county is out there applying more rocky sc- uh, scoria to that section because it was beat up after this last week. In your role as county commissioners, I believe it is your duty to maintain the county infrastructure and to ensure public safety. This request is warranted and justified. Thank you.
Steve, a question for you. So, um, I, I actually drove eighteen this morning on my way here and saw the blade going. So when, when that, um, turns and does that ninety and then. When that turns and does that ninety and then you can either go to the north or to the east? How many, do you know how many, I didn't go to the north, I, I took the east, because you're saying on both of those, right?
Yeah, so the original had three signs, one by two hundred, one by where eighteen and twenty-six kind of connect up there by that old cemetery. Just north of Alsters Farm and then there was one right up by the, you know, where the bridge, right after the bridge where the county road is heading, heading west. So there was originally three signs that were.
Okay.
They just said trucks thirty-five mile.
And. What's the county road when it goes north?
They're, they're all eighteen.
They're all eighteen, oh, okay. So that doesn't help me. I'll have to look at my atlas book. But I kind of understand what you're, what you're saying. And I mean, the road didn't look terrible today, obviously, if they've worked on it lately, but it does, it is missing gravel in a few spots. Or I shouldn't say more than a few spots and several spots, but. And it's mostly gravel trucks that are hauling through there or?
No, it was, it was farm trucks hauling.
Okay.
We was last year harvested corn and then this last week was hay.
Okay.
But we do have some, some gravel trucks that are running on there too, especially with it wet here in the last little bit there. We've been seeing more of that.
Okay.
I got a question too, it's like you got in your letter, you got to, you were. You asked the, the county commission decided to remove all restrictions from the county roads, who, who was, told you that?
Uh, what I read in the paper when you guys removed all the weight restrictions and then went to the state level?
We didn't remove all this, we followed the state rules.
Yeah, exactly, so they, they were removed though, the sign was removed from our county road.
But there's still weight restrictions there.
You're right, but it went from seventy thousand pounds for a total up to a hundred and five.
No, it didn't.
It depends on the.
Depends on your axle.
On your axle configuration, that's a misconception everyone has out there, they think now you can run a hundred and five five. You can't run a hundred and five five unless you have to correct axle configuration and length.
Okay, well, at that time, when that sign was removed is when we also saw the speed limit signs eliminated and removed from those three locations.
So the trucks are overweight, I mean, that's the sheriff's department, you know, they need to, but I mean. When, when, you know, I've read your link and stuff there, it's like, I agreed exactly, but I mean, we're less than what your link is, I, you know, I mean, we're. We're not at one oh five five across our roads and we, and we are not, I mean, more tires, more, I mean, everything that you said in there is accurate. But we were following all of those.
And I understand that, but from a safety standpoint and from a road dust issue. There's a big difference when you're passing, going one way and the semi's coming this way, huge difference between a semi driver fifty and forty-five. And thirty-five and the amount of dust that's kicked up and the amount of blinding dust that is, is generated during that, during that process.
And I understand that Stephen, but I feel like some of that comes with choosing to live on a gravel road.
Yes, but I chose to live on this gravel road before the traffic was generated.
You had a question Travis?
I was just saying, when we, I, I know we did the speed limits, but was that the same meeting or was it one after, I mean, it's kind of irregardless. Okay.
Same meeting.
Okay, gotcha.
And as far as when you were saying washboards, soft spots, I agree that that's a problem across this whole county with. Pretty much every single gravel road and it's, it's a maintenance issue, it's, I think it's something that we are heavily considering for the new year as to. These roads need work and they need maintenance and they are going to require maintenance every two to three weeks and that's unfortunately the condition that our roads are in right now because they're not a paved road.
I, I would like to ask one question though, and that is, can you tell me another gravel road in this county that has a hundred semis a day on it? That did not five years ago. And so it was not built up to that, like some of the county roads that are in this county north of, of Senex and Hazen, possibly south of Hazen. A few of those that are mainline gravel roads, they're built to a different spec than what County eighteen was previous to twenty nineteen. So a hundred semis a day will cause damage. So that's why I've requested this and yes, that is probably, like I said, the most severe case typically. When it's been really bad in the past, it's been closer to forty, fifty semis a day, but still you figure the amount of damage that one semi causes compared to a vehicle. And that's why I included that fourth power law in the sources cited. It's roughly, if you figure an average vehicle that weighs five to six thousand pounds compared to an eighty thousand pound semi. It's twenty-one times greater the amount of damage that one semi causes compared to an average three-quarter ton Chevy truck or a family SUV. And I think, I don't think it's too much to ask for a semi to slow down to thirty-five to alleviate the problems that are being caused on this road.
Do you honestly feel that the semis were following that thirty-five mile an hour speed limit?
No, but at least if there was one typically.
Cause I don't honestly feel that a sign makes a difference to, to some.
Typically most did, but here's the difference is that if there was one that was speeding and was causing issues, I have no recourse. I have nothing that I can do to go, I can't call up the sheriff and then if I did, the sheriff would say, well, what can we do about it? They're not breaking any laws. Or before I at least had the option, if there was, you know, three, four hours into, you know, full day stretch, a semi's going back and forth and there was. One truck that was kind of, you could tell was doing a little bit more and was causing issues, I at least had something I could do as a citizen. Right now I have nothing that I can do as a citizen. So.
Is eighteen, I wish Ken had stayed, he was over here earlier, is eighteen a farmer market road? Does anybody know? Is eighteen a farmer market road?
Yes.
Okay, I think we'll have to talk it over with Ken and Charlie as far as like if that road needs to be upgraded as far as the speed limits. I think we should think about it, probably discuss it at the next meeting, so everybody has a chance to digest. What that would entail, appreciate you coming in Stephen, and like I said, I drove that road and I can kind of see where you're coming from. So we'll look into it.
A lot of our county roads are in really rough shape across this whole county and so it, it, it's a problem across the board. And it's, some of it is the weather, it's beyond Ken's control, but some of it is lack of. Maintaining over the last how many years, so it's, it's just something that I think we really need to work on.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you Stephen.
So I'm going to put that on your highway department for the next meeting?
Yeah, please.
I guess I'd like Ken here to, if he can possibly be here for that meeting.
All right. Other business.
Do you want to knock off that computer and the software?
I think so. Computer purchase?
Okay, that was, last year we didn't get to replace any of the computers, so, and we have it in the budget, so we're, it's basically. Sixteen total computers throughout the entire county, replacing so many desktops, one laptop. And seven, seven other all-in-ones. So, and that's, yeah, we're just requesting, and I, and with some, with monitors.
With monitors, Ken.
Yeah, so that would cover all the maintenance for twenty-two and twenty-three and we have the money for it in the budget.
And they are kind of supposed to be cycled over so many years.
Yeah, this is a regular cycle, this isn't anything strange, it's just a lot, so that's why I brought it before you guys.
So the, did, did you go, oh, too many, too many thoughts too fast, did you go out and get bids on getting these computers?
This is what we do through, through Armor Interactive, they're the ones we have the contract with and they're the ones we maintain them with and they have us on a cycle.
What are you doing with the old computers?
I believe Armor takes those and recycles.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we keep them.
Understand that, but I'm just concerned about the disposal, depending on which computers they are and, you know, the information that's on them. And like they say, you can never delete everything, but you need to have a proper disposal, especially of these. And I don't know what all departments the computers are replacing, but.
Almost every.
But I'm going to have, just throw a dart out there and say like the sheriff's department, I'm sure there's information on some of those computers that are, unless it's not, the sheriff's department computers included.
No, these are.
Okay.
But I know they wipe them out, we always did in the past.
Okay, as long as they go.
And you can take the hard drive off.
As long as these PCs go to proper. Proper entities that can. Delete the information, not just. Gene Wolfe comes in and buys a computer, that, I'm Gene Wolfe. And gets a, you know, buys a PC from the county and I get to take it home then, and I know, I, I'd have. Problems with that, so that's, that's one of my concerns. And are these. All these computers, so they're going to be like our recorder, our auditor, our treasurer. Our land use. They're all going to be compatible with the new software we're going to get.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And the other skill I have is the Tyler software server. We're going to purchase that and get that in place before we can even think about going that financial, that has to be in place first, even though we're still working with Tyler on the other side of it, but. That was the other request.
And that comes out of which budget?
Oh, that will come out of the budget where they put the money for that specifically at two hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, I think that's included.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was in that.
For twenty-four or twenty-three? No, this is twenty-three.
No, I know.
We have a lot of discussion before the motion's even made.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the computer purchases?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Gene, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza, any discussion?
No discussion. Now my questions I posed, okay.
Okay.
I guess they've been answered, I just want to make sure that the old computers go into proper hands. Let's make sure of that, we don't need to delay the purchase of these computers.
Armor takes care of that, but I'll find out.
And will Armor have it all set up for the new computers to come in for everybody, because that's where we're contract with them, right?
Yep, exactly.
And when do the new ones come?
I'm sure it's a couple of weeks after we pay it.
Okay.
But they got to set up, we're setting it up in each office.
Okay, so each office will get their individual.
Oh, yes.
Okay. And that's all part of this price, right?
Yes, it is.
My question then, it's like the fifty-two thousand or fifty-three thousand dollars that we're going to spend here. I just want, for my information, just update me where this money was coming from then, so.
Okay, this was all budgeted.
In twenty-two, some of it's.
Actually, they didn't do anything in twenty-two with the maintenance, they just didn't, so, but. In twenty-three, they did budget enough for this, so this is all budgeted within the twenty-three budget.
Some of this stuff has happened prior to my time, that's why I was asking.
Twenty-three budget, yes.
Some of this money came out of the.
ARPA.
ARPA?
Well, the Tyler, anything tied to that Tyler is ARPA, yes.
The Tyler and the computer are separate.
Yes, they are.
Two different.
I just, so I know where, I was asking. I know we talked about budgeting and stuff on this stuff prior to that, but I just wanted to be updated on where.
I'm also just trying to answer some of your questions on the Tyler software that came out of the ARPA money, there were, there were about. Three different.
Categories, so to speak.
There you go, categories of money that we got and I wasn't sure, that's why I hesitated, which one we used for the Tyler software.
I mean, that makes a difference to me on how I would go down with it when it's up, if I have it in place or not, so.
Any other discussion on the computer purchases? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes, is there a motion to approve the server purchase for the Tyler software?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Rick, second by Jamie, any discussion on the server purchase? Once again, this was part of the, the contract price and the, the ARPA funds on those, so. Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Do we got Terry's not in here?
Yeah, Mark and.
Oh, Mark, oh, there's Mark, um, the House Bill thirteen oh seven funds.
Thirteen oh seven or fifteen oh seven?
Thirteen oh seven was, was what was written down, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thirteen oh seven is what it is. And. Also known as Back the Blue Fund. And I guess Terry, he's under the county tell Monday, so he asked me to come today, my, just to kind of review this with you because I do believe the funds have been received by the county. So a little background, I guess, I'm not sure who knows what about this, but the House Bill thirteen oh seven that was passed by the legislature last session. Basically, they set aside three point five million dollars to be allocated towards law enforcement. Seven hundred and fifty thousand of that went to departments of less than ten, our department's larger, so we got lumped in with everyone else. So what happened is they gave this money to the AG's office, the AG's office had to decide a way to disperse it amongst all the agencies statewide. They came up with the formula, over the last six months they've been working on it and they just released that money now in the form of what they're calling a grant. So basically, we received that money, I think it was. Thirty-six nine oh three that came specifically to Mercer County. And this money's figured off of sworn law enforcement officers slash correctional officers licensed, so then we got a certain amount because of our numbers. I would patrol other agencies off of their numbers, so where we're at now basically is we have this money, there's three, pretty specific how it has to be spent. Retention bonuses, hiring bonuses, or sending someone to the law enforcement, hiring a new person and paying their tuition to law enforcement training academy. So I guess just for informational pers, purposes, if you guys have questions of Terry next week when he's in. He'll gladly visit with you guys, but he's leaning right now towards some sort of retention payment to, I think there's twenty-four employees that would qualify. And if they're in good standing with the department, he's kind of looking at spending the money under that option.
Basically, what we had talked about earlier.
Probably if you've had a conversation with him, like I said, he just wanted me to bring it to the rest of the commissioners.
I guess I just, my question was is that. I'd like to have some conversation with him on how we're going to do this before we do it.
Yep, and that's, he just knew the meeting was today, these funds just came in, so that's why he wanted me to stop in and visit with you. And you have, I believe, till March of twenty twenty-five that we have to have it all finalized, so there is time here, so.
But I mean, there were some, we have, so it's been ongoing processes.
Yep, and if anyone of you want to stop in, I'm sure that's, he just wanted to put out there today, so you guys are all aware of it and what it was, just in case you hadn't heard.
Okay, so no action needs to be taken?
There's no action that would need to be taken right now, just more informational on our side.
Okay.
If you have concerns, questions, reach out to Terry next week and we can take it from there.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Nope.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
We need more stuff like that on the agenda. Um, October recorders fees.
I make a motion to accept October recorders fees of three thousand five hundred nineteen dollars and eighty cents.
Motion by Eliza, Rick actually seconded before you, before she finished, second by Rick, any discussion? Seeing none, Eliza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. P and Z appointment, we got three applicants, this is an unexpired term, Cindy, do you know when that one finishes?
Uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Is the unexpired term.
Is somebody. Whose position is this filling? Bill's? That's what I thought, so. Yes, sorry, sorry, Bill. Sorry, sorry, Bill.
So we got three applications for one position.
Correct.
Okay.
So we got, um, just for the record, we have Jesse Schrifferl, Eric Hofer, and Leroy, is that Fisher?
Yes.
Okay. I think all these individuals have been in Mercer County for quite a while, they all have varying experiences, um. Does any, any commissioner have a recommendation? Usually, we only get one for one, so it's, usually don't have to make a decision.
To me, they're all very qualified, to be honest with you.
Right, um.
Is it a motion or just a nomination, or?
I'd say a nomination probably would be easiest.
I'd like to nominate Jesse Schrifferl to the Planning and Zoning, Mercer County Planning and Zoning Board for the unexpired term to fill Bill, Leroy's position.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jamie, seconded by Eliza, um, to nominate Jesse Schrifferl as the County Planning and Zoning, um, vacancy.
Very appreciative of all the applications, because.
It's very nice.
Any other discussion? See, Jesse's a state employee, right?
Federal.
Federal, okay, I just wanted to make sure that he wasn't like a county employee, so. Any other discussion on the nomination for Jesse? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Rick?
I wanna go with this for all three of them, but I can just see aye.
Okay, Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye, uh, that motion passes, so with Jesse being the one nominated by the commission, um, we'll have him assume the, um, planning and zoning unexpired term, and like we said earlier, there's no meeting tomorrow, but he would go into effect December then? I'm assuming, I mean, is, if he's appointed, then. Whenever next meeting is, okay.
So he wouldn't go into effect right away, though, in case he needs to review any policies or anything?
Cause Bill is gone, correct?
Bill's gone, um.
My only concern is, should he be in effect immediately, so that way he can cover if anything?
Yeah, he should be in effect, um, and then, um, P and Z, uh, they get paid when they go to meetings, so if there's no meeting, there's, there's no compensation on P and Z, so.
Yeah, obviously, you wouldn't get paid for.
For not being there.
Right, but I just mean, like, if there's anything that comes into play in between now and then, I think it would be important that we make sure that it is noted, notice that Jesse is.
A P and Z member?
A P and Z member.
Okay.
Just in case.
Effective as of today?
Today.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. That's taken care of, um, HR.
Yeah, I know, um, I sent it, I talked to Todd, unfortunately, he's not here today, but he said there was nothing that he felt was illegal or anything out of our parameters, as far as, um, accepting the proposal, um, for the HR position that I presented at our last meeting, and I did, um, have it sent to you, Travis, for your signature, but I didn't know if we had to revisit that again then.
I haven't signed it, um, the only thing we talked about was what budget item was come out, did you find anything, Carmen, on that?
Um, we talked, there's a, the CD interest fund.
Okay.
That's the only money that isn't designated for budgetary right now in twenty-three, so that would be the funds that we would use that.
CD interest?
Yeah.
CD interest?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, so with that, um, when I get back, I'll, I'll sign that, um, proposal agreement for HR, and we should be good to go on, on that.
And then my, my only other, um, issue then with the HR is that I, I was thinking that maybe we should transfer the responsibilities um, out of the Auditor's Office to, um, that proposal agreement with Tammy, um, the only thing is that as far as, like, anything entered into our computer system or anything of that, she'd just like to be the person who, um, negotiates that with the Auditor's Office, because I don't think it, we should be entering somebody else into our computer systems if they're only gonna be here for a temporary, short-term time. So that way, you guys would still be responsible for, like, payroll, and I'm getting all that entered in there, and that would still remain there.
Okay, you realize payroll is part of the Auditor's position.
Right.
It isn't sentry code.
Right, that's what I mean, like, it would still stay with you.
It would still stay with you.
But if there's any.
Yeah, but, okay, cause of course, we work with her.
Right, yeah.
Assuming she's gonna work with us through our department, like everybody else.
Yep.
And then, once Travis signs that agreement, I'm gonna need a copy for the Auditor's Office to maintain that document.
Yep.
Yep, but she would be more like, if we're gonna hire some new positions, she would be working on that, and, you know, you know, those things out and stuff like that, so if we have anything in with payroll, that she would just, um, advise you guys on what, what should go in for payroll.
And I do think as we move into this new position, there may have to be some kinks ironed out, and what stays in the Auditor's Office, what comes out, because it's been kind of rolled into a big ball.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Anything else on that?
No.
Okay, uh, EM?
Do you wanna make a motion on it?
Well, we already approved it.
I know, but not that part, it's the portion about moving it in now, do we have to move it or not, we didn't discuss.
No, so, I, I guess clarification for everybody, but, so when we talk HR duties and certain things like that, sometimes, say, like, payroll gets lumped into that, we're not having somebody else do payroll, that's still the Auditor's Office, um, we're not having somebody else do any vouchers or anything like that, that stays in the Auditor's. There's just sometimes confusion that HR is a lot of things, and, and it is and it isn't, I mean, it.
And, and I expect to talk to her, because that's what it's about, HR is about communicating, and then, when we do talk to her and decide on things, then we come to you guys and let you know what's going on, and that's what I was thinking it's gonna happen, actually, it's in the contract.
I guess if it's possible, I think I would like you, as the HR portfolio holder, involved with that conversation.
Yep.
If it's possible.
Yeah, I'll make sure that Tammy understands that I need to be copied in on all of that. But I just wanted to make sure that it was understood that we weren't trying to take stuff away from payroll, and it would still be with you guys, and I just wanted, because I had gotten some questions about that, so I just wanted to clear that up, that's all.
Okay.
Okay.
You good? Okay.
I'm already, I just was wondering how it was gonna transpire, too, so.
Okay.
I think it's a work in progress.
Correct. Okay, EM?
Um, I was contacted by Terry Turnus, who unfortunately isn't here today, but, um, he stated that he would like us to look into, um, moving, um, EM back out of his office and just have it its own entity again, and opening it up to have, um, the position filled. So I wanna work with Tammy, once she comes on, to get, um, what we should do for that position, but just wanted to give everybody a heads up that Turnus has asked that it be removed from the Sheriff's Department, once we get the position filled.
Okay. Okay.
Which I think was somewhat of our intention.
Our initial attend, intentions, I believe, in the first place, but I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that we will be, um, I will be working with Tammy on what we should do as far as a part-time position for the EM, how many hours that would actually include, what we would have for a job posting for that, and then I'll bring that back to the board. And also with the Oliver County, and the Oliver County, yes.
Okay. Good on EM.
Mm-hmm.
All right, the last thing we have is portfolio updates, um, Eliza, you wanna go first? I think you've covered most of yours.
Sure, I've covered most of them, I don't have ambulance until next week, um, but we did just have the airport board, and we are still continuing to work with the ALP, and what we found out, though, was that before, we were hoping to be able to do something with some new tanks to come in, because our fuel system is not uh, um, up to what it should be, um, unfortunately, we found out at first that this, uh, fuel farm wasn't gonna be able to help us, but then, then just a couple of weeks ago, they did say that they could help with a new tank and a new dispensing system, but that's all they could help with, um, so our engineering consultant has stated, though, maybe we should wait for about another year to see if we can get some more grant funding to help with that as well, so there, we're just kinda at a standstill with the fuel cells. Um, we're continuing to work on the hangar leases, um, the hangar lease agreements were from a very long time ago, and so now we're trying to adapt into some new areas, especially as far as, like, the movement of any planes, and who would be responsible for any of that damage of movement were to happen, so we're currently working on that with the pilots, and there's just a couple of things as far as maintenance report, but otherwise, and the airport, um, really hopes that we do go through with us, um, paving that road out in front of there, they're very hopeful that that can get paid, I'm looking forward to that.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
All right, Jamie?
Is there any, does the airport have any possibilities to apply for, I suppose it's not their property, so they can't apply for grants for that? Right.
Yeah, the ALP is, um, what they have for the federal granting programs that they try to work through.
Right.
And unfortunately, they can't use that for that road.
Um, as far as landfill, um, Candy did get a new individual hired, um, I don't know details on his name, so I'm not gonna really say, um, but so far, she said it's going, going good, I think they were trying to finalize some stuff with, um, payroll and stuff. Um, Greg's gonna come out and help her haul some dirt, um, she had asked the road department, but I think they're unable to help until next week, just I suppose with whether they're trying to get things done, too. Um, there was concerns, um, mainly from the city of Beulah last week regarding the landfill, um, with their trucks and stuff, but we're, we're dumping in the cell, we need to be dumping in. Unfortunately, Mother Nature has not been kind, it's been wet, um, so they're doing the best, best, Candy's doing the best she can, Jacob, too, um, City of Hazen had no complaints about garbage, so, um, I did talk with one of the Beulah City Commissioners, and hoping we can work through that and just kinda work together, none of us are happy with the way fall is going, so, um, Jim does unfortunately have an opening in the Building and Grounds, janitorial staff, um, so that, I believe, went out in the paper this week, uh, otherwise, it's been pretty quiet for him, got snow moved. I think that's about it, haven't chatted with Buster, so, and we had, I believe we talked about LAPC last time, so we just had that meeting. So I think we would.
Okay. Um, like I mentioned earlier, P and Z, um, is canceled for tomorrow, didn't have anything on the agenda, um, we'll see if we have one in December, um, there's the annual Lewis and Clark, um, meeting and banquet that'll be in December, I don't have the date written down. Um, Library Board, I think we'll meet one more time yet this year, but, um, nothing new with Library Board, um. I think that's about it, most of my stuff is kinda end of year cleanup, but, Rick?
Okay, uh, we, uh, we, a couple, mine have already been completed with, uh, update from the Sheriff's Department with Mark, so you heard all that, uh, I talked with, um, over at the Veterans Office, and everything's going okay there, Recorder, we've got the fees in on that also, that, I did attend the McCad meeting, um, uh, last, for, for, I think it was, last Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, I think it was, okay, I did go to that meeting, and, uh, I guess it was, I was a little disappointed in the turnoff there, but, uh, um, and I was also disappointed in the fact that they don't, we won't meet again until February, but, uh, that, uh, I was interested in the fact that what Beaver did state, that, um, with this talent industry, if it does show up, and we do get to that point, that, um, that, that actual, uh, completed, I asked him about the sludge and the mess that's left over, a lot of people are in a conception that we're gonna ship this stuff in, or bury it, or ship it out, and it's all, it sounded like it, in the process, it would all be used, and it wouldn't be a big mess, so, it was kinda interesting to hear that, so, uh, Fairwood, um, I'm leaving in about twenty minutes, I'm heading for convention, and, uh, I think that's, we'll be talking with Sheriff's Department, and that's pretty much what I have.
Okay, Gene?
Well, the Road Department, ongoing battle with the roads, uh, I don't know what more to say there, um, we're, we're looking into, I'm gonna have discussion with our, with Cannon for next year's plan on the roads, there's some roads that are in really tough shape, and if, um, can only tell people, do you think your road is bad, drive County seven, south of Golden Valley to the county line, and that's all I'll say. Um, the, I went to the Weed Bore meeting, um, they're gonna be getting a new four-wheeler, and I didn't fully understand all the monies involved, but they're gonna get a, a new one's about ten grand, eleven, about eleven thousand dollars, it's, uh, they're gonna get, there's a ten percent government discount, they get, it's gonna be five thousand dollars to boot, they're gonna get a, uh, ad grant of seventy-five hundred, in the end, it's, uh, the way he explained, it's gonna cost County zero, so we'll see a bill come through for the four-wheeler, but then they turn that in and get the grant money, I, I didn't ask specifics, I just wrote, took notes. And then they're gonna order some more, um, uh, chemical, I just, I did see bill come through for chemical, but they're gonna get some more, um, Tordo and Grayson, Benun, Freelix, I guess, and so we'll be seeing that, um, and there was discuss, discussion about the, um, eighty-twenty cost share, and what, um, chemicals they're gonna add to that, and I did not write down which ones they were, but there's gonna be more chemicals that they're gonna cost share. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay.
I guess there was that Vision, Vision West meeting, I think Cindy and I logged in for a while.
Yeah, but I thought it was gonna be like carbon capture, like, some of it carbon capture, not.
It, it was, I, no, I didn't feel, I forgot we both logged in, it.
Or, uh, I thought it was something else.
I thought it was something else, also, so, and it was really hard to be on Zoom, their cameras were, it was, I, I found I had to log off, it, I was dizzy, so.
Yeah, they got that, I think they call it.
It's emotion, or something, yeah.
Maybe it was my weird sound.
Yeah, but they were, too much movement.
All right, well, that's all we have on the agenda, so, meeting adjourned, thanks, everybody.
No, I should've been there, I was trying to keep track of it, I'm sitting in the combine, and all of a sudden, going, oh, it's about a clock or maybe. I thought I had, when I had a people meeting, same time.